I would like to call my new order, I'm sorry we're late. But I am opening the meeting officially at 6:06 and we need to all rise quickly please. United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, adoption and approval of the agenda for September 10th, 2019. Move through the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we go into the best part of the meeting, student reports. First, we are going to hear from Pen Grove Elementary.
We were just spotting the Pen Grove Panthers sticker up there. We were trying to not be distracted. Pretty special.
You're the only ones that mixed stickers.
Wow. How about you guys can stand right over here, okay? Alright, well, good evening everybody. My name's Amy Pedegi and I'm a principal at Pen Grove and we have two students with us tonight. Would you guys like to introduce yourselves?
My name is Evan Riley and I'm in second grade.
My name's Taylor Riley, I'm in third grade.
And so, we just wanted to spend a couple minutes sharing some pictures with you. We did a little photo walk around campus just to share with you some of our favorite places on campus. And before we do that, we were kind of brainstorming just about life earlier today. Evan reminded me, they're always keeping me on my toes. And so, they did want to share, even though they're second and third graders, some aspirations that they have for growing up. So, right now Evan, what do you think you would like to be when you grow up?
When I grow up, I want to be a professional baseball player for the San Francisco Giants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What ambitions?
Probably shortstop or first base.
Wow. And Camry has equally amazing ambitions.
I would be a teacher.
And not just a teacher anyway, anyone would be a teacher. Alright, so Evan's gonna just share, these are a couple of his favorite places on campus. Go ahead Evan.
So, first, the Pen Grove Panthers sign, it is right where, on the lower parking lot where all the Pen Grove Panthers come in and park. And it just cheers everybody up in the morning. And then, the stairs, you walk up there in the morning too and when you're going down to the pickup lot. And that is, it's very hard to miss because it's very colorful and it cheers everybody up.
And so, we also just love to have positive messaging around to remind our students constantly that, just to be the type of person that you want to meet and to make their days amazing. We also are really big into art, so you'll see lots of color and vibrant pieces of art all over campus, which is thanks to our Art Enrichment Program. Alright, Camry, tell us about this.
Every day you walk by this thing that has your art life skills on it.
Yep, and so, of all of our life skills, we have a different one each month. How often do we switch them up?
Every month.
Do you guys remember what this month is?
Responsibility.
Exactly. What's one of your favorites that you see out there that you like to practice? Creativity, what about you Evan?
I really like respect.
Okay, nice, me too. And just one of our outdoor learning spaces, thanks to our PTA, it's so amazing to see kids out there reading and writing all the time. We do love spray paint quite a bit, but obviously we never do when kids are on campus. Penny McPanther is our mascot and so she leaves us footprints every now and then. We left her at home, she's still recovering from our Jog-a-thon from last week. And always just a special place right outside my office, we have a little free library and it's just so fun to see kids all cozy and reading and swapping out books there frequently. Alright, Camry, your turn.
I love the garden because it's so peaceful and all, let the students put into it, it just makes it a really beautiful place.
Yes, so our garden is quite elaborate and it's filled with lots of peaceful moments in nature and lots of hard work as well. And so, just kind of in closing, Evan, we were talking about just what makes Pen Grove feel so special when you're on campus. Can you kind of, can you share with our school board and all the guests tonight, what makes Pen Grove feel so special to you?
I just really like walking in the halls, everybody knows each other and I like everybody saying hi to each other and being nice to everybody.
Awesome, and Camry, what about you? What's something that makes Pen Grove feel really special to you?
I like that Pen Grove is so colorful and bright and it makes me very cheerful.
It's kind of hard to hold that day there, huh? And then, just a big focus for us is the people. And so, really, that's what makes Pen Grove special, all the things that you saw just now. But this is our PTA board and their kids and just a group, a community and a staff and parents who just do so, so much to make Pen Grove what it is. Just last Friday, we had our Jog-a-thon, our last picture for you of the day. And so, we had a bright rainbow of colors. We're at 450 students this year, which is 50 more than we're used to. Lots of little, lots of little friends, we have 100 TK and Kinder students. So, every year Ms. Jay, that's the big beautiful face you see in the front, she and I do an annual selfie with our students there. And it's just one of the best days ever. So, we just got to experience that Friday and we're still kind of all on a high from that as well. So, that's a little glimpse, a little picture walk of our school and we would love to have you guys come visit anytime. Thank you so much.
Say I'm very impressed by the speakers.
Oh, very impressive. My goodness.
Better than some of those. Okay, our next one will be Mary Collins.
Good evening, good evening, school board members, district administration and members of the community. We are the leadership team representing Mary Collins School of Cherry Valley. We are excited for this opportunity to share with you some activities that we have that have been a tradition going on at our school for years. And some new activities that we've just begun this year. But first, we'd like to introduce ourselves. I'm Peter and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Ren and I'm also in eighth grade.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie and I'm in eighth grade.
One of our beloved school traditions is a back-to-school tradition. When our entire school along with family members and former students spend the day at Dillon Beach. Playing games, eating food, digging holes and building sand castles. And just enjoying the chance to be together as a school community. It was a beautiful day this year at Dillon Beach and everyone had a good time.
Our school loves to read. In fact, we have a whole day dedicated to celebrating our love of reading. It's called, of course, Celebrate Reading Day. On this day, each class has their own special guest career who comes to their class to read to us. This year, we had local authors, librarians and all kinds of other community members. Then, every teacher and student as well as parents gathered together in our club to spend time reading together.
Soon, on September 18th, we'll have our biggest fundraiser for, of the year, for our Mary Collins School Education Foundation. A huge number of students will turn out in their running shoes and enjoy getting used to our wonderful track to run hundreds of miles collectively. And raise loads of funds to support our school's music, PE and advanced math programs as well as others. The leadership team will supply the music to keep the runners pumped up and the watermelon and popsicles will keep our runners refreshed.
Every other year, the fourth and fifth grade students take an overnight field trip to Fort Rocks to learn about the experiences of the four tribes of the Littletick. The students are split into job groups, each group takes a different role in the economy. The group consists of militia, hunters, cooks, artisans, clerks and gardeners.
Like Fort Rocks, every year our sixth grade students get to enjoy a multi-day experience off-campus during the first quarter of the school year. This year, our group is returning to Point Fennita in Sausalito to spend five days and four nights hiking, exploring and learning all of our local ecosystems. They also get to spend their time recreating new bonds and making old ones stronger. The sixth graders always return from this trip as a more tightly knit group of who have built trust and harmony in their time together.
Our leadership team plans our dances for each quarter. Each dance has a theme. Our most recent dance was a tie dye dance. We scheduled tie dyeing, we scheduled tie dyeing for the kids who didn't have any tie dye. And we also made colorful posters to hang on the walls. We provide some snacks and hire a DJ. Most of our middle school doesn't attend.
Each year at Cherry Valley, our second through eighth grade classes each perform a memorized play performed completely by the students. And our upper grade classes write the script and direct their own original plays. This year, our seventh and eighth grade classes are using, all are, all using picture books as the foundation to explore themes and acceptance, identity and discrimination.
Nice. One of our most beloved traditions is our school variety show. Every year, students will practice and perform their very own skits by themselves or in groups to present in front of the entire school. It's really nice. And we usually have such a great turnout that we have to split it in between two different nights. Because just so many, so many people want to attend. And it's also the biggest fundraiser for our PTA, which is also very great.
For the third year in a row, our school has done a project called PBL, or Project Based Learning. Where in the beginning of the year, all six, all of our sixth through eighth grader students are assigned to one, to one of the five different PBLs. Each run by different teachers. After that, every Wednesday, the middle schoolers will go to their assigned PBL class to design and accomplish a project given to them. Here are different PBLs.
The first PBL is podcasting. In podcasting, the students are split into groups and each group thinks of an idea that their own group could discuss over a few podcasts and a cool group name that relates to the theme. Then they record an opening in music to go before each episode. Some groups have interview-type discussions and they will email the person who they feel would make a good addition to the episode. For instance, one group interviewed the mayor of Petaluma for their episode. The teacher will upload these podcasts.
The second PBL is Kempt's Beautification. Kempt's Beautification is one of, is it a PBL that just really helps make Cherry Valley a lot more colorful and beautiful? And I've only heard good things from the students who have attended that PBL. Like last year, they set up this mural on one of the fall walls for the graduating class of 2019. Where each student in the graduating class took a different, put paint on their hand in a different color and made this huge rainbow over the wall. The third is the Petaluma River Park PBL. The teacher who runs that has noticed that that park has been kind of trashed lately. And he's setting up something so that, or he's having kids go out there.
So, basically what we do in this PBL is eventually we're going to get around to going to that space and we're going to take a look at what's there. Right now, what we're doing is we're taking, we've seen pictures of it and we're trying to come up with an idea for what we kind of want to put there. And like, one of the main ideas we have so far is bike trails, horse trails and dog parks. So, and then hopefully we get to build on that soon.
That's cool.
So, Cherry Valley cares is about a group of kids that will learn like how to take care of like our whole community of people. Like in cities, we see like homeless people and like then there's apes that are endangered, endangered. So, we're going out to see how we can help like fix those problems.
And the final one is the political activism PBL. If you don't know, there's a lot of controversy going on in the media around politics. And the political activism PBL is basically a way to put kids' voices out there. And students have been educating themselves about the issues and, and finding issues that matter to them and finding appropriate outlets for their opinions. And it's also run by our booth teacher today. Any questions?
I think your podcast PBL should talk to the political activism PBL, or all of the PBLs.
I think we're gonna actually end up doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
On the Petaluma River Park, do you work with Wetlands Alliance?
We are going to do that, yes.
Okay, so that's part of the group that's going to be helping you and that whole, yeah, that's.
That's so cool.
Thank you.
The next group will be Casa Grande.
Well, everyone, good evening, I'm Holly Van Renshaw, I'm one of the ASB co-presidents at Casa Grande High School. My other co-president Ava couldn't be here tonight, she had to work and I understand that. So, I'm going solo on this again, I did this last time, I did a site report. And I'm really excited to tell you guys about everything that's going on at Casa, it's so fun right now. So, we had our Color By Class Rally, Game and Dance, all on the same day. It was a very busy and very fun day, jam-packed full of activities. The rally was great, we had games, we had a sing-along to Country Roads Take Me Home and that was a huge hit. I'm very surprised, but it turned out great. In this photo, we have a bunch of our 10th graders dressing up for Color By Class, their color is yellow. And this year, we gave out, like we did last year, t-shirts that have Color By Class colors and our new slogan for the year. There's a place for everyone in the big house and if you've bought ASB sticker, you've got that free t-shirt, which is awesome. And Mr. Ryan, Mr. Rick Sweeney, who are our leadership teachers this year, worked really hard to help us put this all together and it was a huge success. We got tons of people at the dance, tons of people having fun. It was a great way to kick off the year on the second Friday of the year. Came up real quick, but we pulled it off and I'm very happy about that. And Apes in the Garden, Mr. Adams. Mr. Adams is a wonderful teacher who is growing lettuce and beets in the garden. We have a wonderful garden on our campus that grows tons of fresh fruits, vegetables, anything you could want, we probably got it at some point or another. They're planting on Friday, really excited to see that. And you can ask Mr. Adams if he can have some lettuce or beets for a small donation because he does this with his own money. He does not buy any of the seed fertilizer with like school money, he does this himself. He's a wonderful, wonderful teacher. So, if you want some beets and lettuce, go to Mr. Adams. And we have Golden Gaucho cards, they are in the main office. And teachers, staff, anyone can pick one up and give it to a student to reward them for basically following our mission statement, doing anything that they think is really awesome. I think it's a great addition to our campus. It's really nice to acknowledge the good things that kids are doing. And we have, again, visioning at Casa, we have our personal visions that we're making in Spanish, Three Honors, which is very, very advanced. I've heard some of my friends speak that in Spanish, it's amazing, they're almost fluent. They work together in small groups and produce statements for their graduation. There are so many of them, if you ever come by Casa, please check out all the beautiful work that our students make. There's honestly so many projects hanging in the windows that I stop and look at every day, they're so nice. And observations in near darkness, this was in chemistry class, I actually did this today in honors chemistry. It was really fun, Mr. Creighton, who was our honors chemistry teacher, had us light a candle, we observed it, we observed, it's qualitative, quantitative things and how the wax dripped and everything. We had to describe it in a way that really made us think in a scientific manner, super fun. Thankfully, no one like burned down the building or anything, we're still standing. We let them have mattresses and it's all good. It was fun. And there's our chamber choir with our wonderful choir teacher, Ms. Sontag and accomplice Lauren and all of the wonderful choir kids. The music department really is thriving with choir and music, symphonic band, concert band, freshman band. I'm personally in symphonic band, we started strong and we're only going higher and higher in our abilities. If you want to check us out, we are playing at Back-to-School Night at 6:30 Thursday, Casa Grande in the NMU. So, if you want to come hear our music so far, please come check us out, we're doing really well. I'm very happy to report that Casa Grande is well and thriving, we are having so much fun already. It's only September and the school's just alive with so many different projects, wonderful teachers, wonderful students. I'm so excited to tell you throughout the year how our school's doing, what projects we're working on and how we're going to make this community better. Thank you.
Last but never least, Petaluma High.
Hi, I'd like to formally introduce myself, I'm Lily Pastwell and I am Petaluma High's ASB Vice President this year. I've been in ASB the past four years and I'm super excited to be representing the school at these school board meetings and future student month meetings. So, our biggest event so far is that this year we have a new principal, Mr. Mori, and new assistant principal, Miss Deney. We've had really successful Neon Dance, Club Rush, first home sporting games, for volleyball, track, or volleyball cross-country, football and girls tennis. Senior Sunrise, which was the first time in 12 years where we've seen a sunrise. And freshman orientation and then Linker's cornhole tournament. So, just a little bit more about welcoming Mr. Mori, Miss Deney. It's been absolutely amazing having our new principal and vice principal come in. They're really doing great within the school, like we're getting these parts of Casa actually handed out to the students, which is really helping a lot for ASB revenue. It's been really cool just kind of seeing the change and kind of getting used to the new environment with a new principal and assistant principal. Freshman orientation, this is our third, yeah, so our third year doing Linker this year. And so, the day before school, we have, or two days before this is school, we had freshman orientation, which is where our Linker, which is the juniors and seniors from our school, will go through a two-day training the week before we do freshman orientation. And basically with groups of about 10 to 12 freshmen, they'll take two of upperclassmen and just kind of lead them through certain events and kind of help them bond. That way when they get into going to high school, they're not getting nervous or going into it not knowing anyone. So, I think it's a really cool thing that our school's been doing, it's been really successful. As you can see, it's pretty fun and all the kids have fun with it. So, next would be our senior sunrise, which as I said before, was actually extremely successful. We had a huge turnout and everyone absolutely loved it. We got donations from places like Noah's, Starbucks and also like just little history around town. And we got, like the entire football field was packed, it was so cool. Getting to see the sunrise for the first time in that long was, was kind of like a really good sign for the best for our senior year. So, more with the Linker, oh, supposed to say Linker, Linker Cornhole Tournament. So, as part of Linker, it actually continues throughout the whole year. So, we'll be doing Linker events almost every Friday, trying to get the freshmen more acclimated to their environment and getting more involved in the school. So, last week we had a cornhole tournament and these were the two winners. And they won. And they, again, like had a great turnout and it was super cool to just like see this program growing so much. Next would be our Neon Dance, which was extremely successful also. We had about 500 students come, which is well within our average for our first welcome back dance, which was absolutely awesome. This is our ASB class after cleaning up, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit tired. It was super fun and we had a really great turnout and it was a really great fundraiser for our sophomore class for the, well, going towards their prom. And then Club Rush, which was absolutely awesome. I am one of the club presidents for Joe and True, so it was great. We had tons and tons of signups and almost for all the clubs, there wasn't one club that didn't have at least 20 to 30 signups. It was absolutely incredible to see how many kids were coming out there. And it went the whole line and it was just a really cool turnout to see everything. And up there, you see like we have Hosa, which is ongoing and they'll also be a part of like our homecoming club parade this year. And then also, we have Drum Club, Chirming and Circle of Friends and clubs like that, which was really cool to kind of see everyone getting back into it.
What's Circle of Friends?
So, Circle of Friends is a club we have at our school where kids with disabilities will work with some of the other like kids within the school. And they'll do like little activities, like I don't know, like painting or stuff like that. It's something I, I was involved in for a lot of my life. And our ASB president, Lucy Ellis, is the president of it and she's been in it for the past four years. And it's really great, like all the kids are so sweet and they are able to create like all these different relationships, you know, without like any kind of like worries or stress about it. And it happens every Thursday. So, right now, our sports have been doing actually, well, pretty good. Awesome, our volleyball team is nine and one right now. And so, some important sports events, and I highly recommend you come out and see is that we have a volleyball Egg Bowl coming up on the 24th. And then it has the times for JV, first D and freshman. And so, football, so as you've been saying, it's been up and down, but it's been really fun. The student section's been absolutely amazing and so incredible to be a part of. So, we have the freshman football Egg Bowl, which is actually happening this Thursday. And then this Friday, we have a home football game versus Delmore State at 7:00 for first D. And then, girls tennis is also happening this week and they're playing Napa at home on Thursday. And we also have a cross-country meet, which is happening at Homecoming. So, our upcoming Petaluma High School events is Homecoming, that's what we're all focusing on. And our Homecoming Parade is going to be the 27th, which is 3:15 on Berry Street. And we see we're gonna have a new route, so we actually just signed the flyers today and we should be handing them out in the next couple days. But they're going to be a lot shorter due to the amount of people working in the police department right now. But we're still having the parade and everyone's really excited about it and footballing's been going really great between all the different classes. And then we also have our Homecoming Football Game, which is going to be against Vintage, 7 o'clock at Ellison Field. And then our Homecoming Dance, which is going to be the 28th. And yeah, that's everything happening, I'm really excited to be coming back and doing all these presentations for you guys. It was really great being here today.
That's great, thank you.
That was great. It's so nice to hear high school students that are enthusiastic about their school. As a high school teacher, that doesn't always happen. Okay, everybody. Want to take a break? Oh, yes, students who need to go home? We will take, we will take a three-minute break, just real quick so you can go.
Thank you so much and for coming.
I just, I just smiling on it. Yeah, whatever. Take it for what it is.
All right, to continue, we now have one more presentation from the lovely Chris Thomas.
Well, it's kind of a hard act to follow. I don't, I don't know if I can use the same adjectives, awesome and a few other things. So we've got a few extra binders, have a brief PowerPoint, literally ten slides, including the question slide. So just according to what's in the binder, this is unaudited actuals, which means basically we closed books and we're presenting the financial position of the district as of two thirty of two thousand nineteen. So how did we close the year? I give a narrative that kind of describes all the different reports that are in there. Gives you some other anecdotal information, kind of variances, major significant variances. It also gives you any fund balance in summary form for all the funds. Compared to spreadsheets, our spreadsheet, we'll touch on those in a few minutes. Certifications, the general fund, which gives you a little bit more detail on our general fund. All other funds, which are in the next tab, and that's every fund in the district other than the general fund. And then supplemental information, which we'll also touch on briefly.
Chris, what is STIRS on behalf? What's that mean?
So let's, let's, let's go to the PowerPoint and then I'll kind of touch on it when we get to the slide. So Pedalma sees schools. Who are we? I always like to clarify this because our general fund is a combining of all of our five internal charters in our two different districts. So we are Pedalma Elementary, that includes the Pendrav Elementary Charter, that authorized by Pedalma Elementary, Sixth Grade Academy, and Live Oak Independent Charter, which is not included, they have their own separate book, Independent. Pedalma Joint Union High School District, which includes authorizing Mary Holmes and Cherry Valley, Pedalma Accelerated Charter, and the Edgewood College. It also includes our South County Consortium. So that's everything other than Live Oak is in this general fund budget. So it actually includes seven different funds, so they collapsed into one. Here's where the PowerPoint, you have to, it's easy as hell. So basically I'm giving you a quick summary here of the overall revenues in the adopted budget and how they compare to how we closed the books for eighteen nineteen. So remember the adopted budgets for this year, eighteen nineteen, last year. And I'm breaking them down by major revenues, the local control funding formula, which is our primary source of revenue, federal funds, one-time state funds. And you can see we got in just under one point three million in one-time money in eighteen nineteen, if you have that in zero in nineteen twenty. And then we have all other state funds, which includes things like lottery funds, includes things like many of our state grants, things like special education, et cetera. Parcel tax funds, I break those out from other local funds because I think it's always a good idea to take a look at those. And you can see we closed the books with one million nine hundred fifty thousand. We're budgeting one million nine hundred seventy-five thousand for this year. Elementary actually came in higher than we anticipated and the high school district came in lower. And those are always hard to predict because of things like senior exemptions that are requested depending on the district.
So is there an explanation of the other state revenues and why it's so much lower?
Yep.
Oh, you're getting it. Okay, yeah, exactly. All right, I'll shut up.
And then there's other local revenues, which include things like local grants and donations, a lot of athletic funds that we collect. It also includes special education funding under eighty-six oh two, because that's a transfer of funds through the Sonoma County SFA, the Special Education Local Plan area. It comes under eighty-seven hundred dollar local revenue, even though it's really eighty-six oh two block grant funding. That's actually primarily made up of local property taxes, what the funding source. So going to your question, both of your questions. So you'll see that, going back to the prior slide, haven't looked on yet. Other state jumped up pretty dramatically. And if you look at the comparative spreadsheets, go to comparative spreadsheet tab and you look at page one, actually if you look at page, excuse me, five, you'll see eighty-five ninety other state revenues. And you'll see how it came in two point eight, almost two point nine million more. Why is that? That's because under the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, who issues statements, we became obligated about five years ago, four or five years ago, to start recording the state's proportion of STIRS and PERS in our books. So it's actually reflected in our audit report. So we have to do a calculation every year when we close and we actually have to record an expense and a revenue, an offsetting revenue. So there's zero impact on the general fund because the revenues equal the expense. But we have to record that and it's jumped up about three point two million dollars in large part because STIRS and PERS rates have been pretty significantly. My notes says STIRS, but it's really STIRS and PERS. We're now actually obligated to employ and close as well. So that ten point two million is really not new revenues to us in the, in the true sense of revenues. It's really an offset to the STIRS adjustments that we're obligated to record in our expenditure side of the budget and you'll see that in a minute. Does that make sense?
So it's an accounting thing, right?
It's an accounting thing, absolutely.
So why is the, the new budget, why is it lower than I thought?
So what we will do is we will now take how we close. So we do these calculations at the end of the year and we do it by function and we do it for every fund. And we find out what is the final amount that we have to account for. Once we do that, then in the first interim budget, you'll see that we then help will adjust the current year. So the adopted budget was essentially based on the eighteen nineteen budget. So that will also go up dramatically at the next, at the first budget revision. And you're going to see that when we get to the expenditure side. The important thing to remember, it's a, it's a zero-sum game, so there's no net impact. Revenues, we, there's a specific resource that we account for it in and revenues equal expense. So when the expenditures go up, the revenues go proportionally. And I actually put in the narrative a little description about it. So if you go to the narrative under restricted expenditures, the second page, it actually says STIRS and PERS according to Gatsby sixty-eight, financial accounting, reporting for pension STIRS on the cap. It talks about why we have to record those types of things under C's restricted expenditure. So I gave you a little word about kind of what it means. If you really want to know, look up Gatsby sixty-eight and it'll tell you everything you want to know. Okay, going on to expenditure side. So you'll note under employee benefits, that's also twenty-five point nine, almost twenty-six million versus the current year, twenty-four million. That's where that other piece of the STIRS and PERS in new is accounted for. So we come back with our first budget revision, you'll see the thirty-one hundred and the thirty-two hundred also jump up. If you go to the comparative spreadsheet, page six, you'll see under thirty-one hundred and thirty-two hundred, you'll see that three point two million variances that it's referring to. Say the two-five-seven-five and the six-five-five under the variance column. That's where we're recording those STIRS and PERS increases under this reporting thing that we're obligated to do. Okay? And, and that's the offset to the three point two million five eighty-five other state revenues. But again, it's a zero sum, no impact. Okay. So you can see certificate of classified personnel, that's where we account for our salaries. Employee benefits, it's just that, books and supplies, services, capital outlay, and then other financing. When someone asks you what's the size of our budget, it's usually based on the amount of expenditures. So our budget is basically a ninety-two million dollar budget. When we record all of the carryover, it'll be more like ninety-five million. And we'll talk about that in a minute. So then just to summarize it even further, total revenues, total expenditures, adopted budget, unaudited actuals. You'll see we were deficit spending to the tune of one point one million dollars, almost one point two million. But when we closed the books, we're not deficit spending primarily due to the restricted side of the budget. In other words, we get a lot of local grants and donations. CSI funds are a perfect example of that. We received state money for the...
Comprehensive support and improvement.
Not pricing them.
Good.
Very good. So we received those monies, we did not spend those monies because we just received them toward the end of the year. We record them and then basically that becomes carryover. So those carryover dollars are what then support the expenditures in this year. The majority of that is the restricted and in the spreadsheet, we kind of break it down further. So you can see on page seven of the comparative spreadsheets, that we have an ending fund balance for restricted of six point six million dollars. So the majority of that is, is the restricted side. And then it breaks down into the beginning fund balance to the ending fund balance. And just for you to know, the ending fund balance for eighteen nineteen becomes the beginning fund balance for nineteen twenty, and then so on and so forth. So if you went back to your adopted budget, the ending fund balance would look different than it looks here because we now have an updated beginning fund balance. So next slide. And then here we're just looking at the components and then the fund balance. How do we break that down? We talked about that just a minute ago. Revolving cash, about thirty-one thousand. Stores, this is primarily fuel and oil. So we looked at doing an inventory of how much fuel did we have on hand? And instead of expensing that for last year, we actually reduced our expenses down because we had that in the tanks at, as June thirtieth. And then we're more clearly recognizing what our actual expenditures were. And then you can see the restricted at six point six million, we just talked about that. Then we break down what are, what are part of the unrestricted components? We have the additional two percent at one point eight million. South County's ending fund balance is just under eight hundred forty thousand. So that is ending fund balance that South County owns, it's a portion of ours. And then we have local site carryover, three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars are just over. So those are from those unrestricted local grants and donations that we're collecting and we count for them separately, school by school. And then at the first budget revision, actually already, principals are looking at their budgets, that carryover is literally being posted as we speak. We posted a bunch of it on Friday and more of it today so that school sites that have access to those funds. So that money, that will go away in your first budget revision, this, this ending, but expenditures will go up. And it will create deficit spending potentially, but it's one-time in nature, so it's okay that it creates deficit spending because it's one-time in nature. Because it's one-time carryover that the sites have access to. And then our three percent state required reserve for EU economic uncertainty, and then available reserves over above that. And then the adopted budget, for, for these purposes, I put local site carryover in so that you can actually see that three fifty-five comes over because that's part of that beginning fund balance, includes South County money and includes that local site carryover that then will be budgeted from this year. So we wanted to show it here.
What about the drop in, so we ended with curriculum adoptions at seven hundred thousand. Are we just adopting less? Is that why it went down?
Well, we adopted a bunch of curriculum adoption in eighteen nineteen.
Right.
Were able to reduce that. And we budgeted for further in nineteen twenty.
Okay.
So as we've been adopting, we've been reducing that. Not dollar for dollar, but we've been reducing down the amount that we need to set aside.
Do we as a district aim for a reserve percentage above the state requirement?
Five percent is our minimum, so the three percent plus the two up above. But what I've, what I've talked to the boards about in the past is, you know, reserves and cash are not the same. So reserves are just that, they're budgeted reserves. But the greater your reserves, the greater liquidity you have in cash. So proportionately, if your reserves are higher, your cash liquidity is higher. Why is cash important? Cash is important because we get a lot of our funds in local property taxes that we don't start seeing until really December, when we all pay or start paying our local property taxes. And so if you look back at page one of the comparative spreadsheets, you'll see of the sixty-seven million dollars, which is our local control funding formula, the unaudited actuals, or better looking than adopted budget, seventy million. The first two numbers in that row, the twenty-seven point six and the six point nine, that's what we get from the state. So more than half, forty million dollars comes from local property taxes. So having cash liquidity so that we can make payroll commitments and so on and so forth is important. We have not, because we have adequate reserves, we have not had to do what's called a TRAN, a Tax Revenue Anticipation Note. It's really just a short-term financing that schools use. If we had lower reserves, we might have to do a TRAN and that creates costs, because you have to take a bit of financing, so. That helps kind of explain. So it's kind of a, yes, we want to have minimally five percent reserves, which for district our size is very increasable, but the greater the reserves, the better fluctuation will be.
So if we're talking about reserves, can I ask you a question about the reserves? So at the end of the agenda, there was the assigned and the unassigned. And there was, on the assigned, there was a two percent reserve for economic uncertainty, which was one point, almost one point eight. And then another that was three percent for economic uncertainty that's required by the state. And then also under, under unassigned, it had a four point five million plus of available reserves that are that amount over all of the other reserves. And I was, I wasn't clear as to what, whether that included this five percent of reserves?
Yes.
No. And so, but you considered it one time. So I was just wondering why the one time and then how is this, how does this, what does it refer to?
So the, the available is essentially your savings account. So as we post additional expenditures or revenues, this is the account that fluctuates. So when we settle with our, both our R and D units and management and we provide compensation increases, it comes out of...
It'll come out of there.
Right. Why do I say this is one time? Because it's truly one time. It's like if you have a savings account, ten thousand dollars, when you save, use up that savings account, it goes away.
But where does this come from then?
This is a, an accumulation over the years of whatever the variances have been as we've closed the book.
Okay.
It's an accumulation, so.
Got it.
So whenever you close and you have carryover, it's one time in nature, just like for the school site, that three fifty-five is their carryover.
So this is all carry, accumulation of carryover?
Yes, yes. Just like the school site's carryover, they get to spend it once and then it goes away. But then they collect donations and they spend portions of those donations. And so they'll get a new bank of carryover, whatever that might be, when we close the books for nineteen twenty. It's the same thing here.
Thank you. I was, just couldn't figure out where all the, what all the...
There are the words. When you look about, when you look at affordability, the important is on page three of this comparative spreadsheet. And it's really looking at what are your ongoing revenues as compared to your ongoing expenditures? Because that's really where you're saying, I make a hundred thousand dollars a year and I spend ninety. So that means I've got ten thousand dollars that I'm not spending that I'm making of ongoing, right? I make a hundred thousand dollars a year, I spend a hundred and twenty. I've got deficit spending of twenty thousand dollars because I'm spending twenty thousand more than I'm making. So maybe that twenty thousand is due to a one-time expense. I'm renovating my house. I'm putting twenty thousand dollars into new windows and new floors, whatever. That's one time, so it might make sense you're dipping into your savings account to do that. That's essentially on a much smaller scale than this budget is. It's saying there are ongoing revenues and there are ongoing expenditures. And how does it look when we compare that? And if you look at column A, we're essentially at zero. We're essentially... We're essentially making this amount and spending that amount. Now, we know that the adopted budget is updated. We're already adjusting for staffing, we're posting carryover, we're doing stuff. So when we come back at first interim, you'll have a much better reflection of how it would look on an ongoing basis. There will be one-time expenditures in here. There's not as much one-time revenue because the state's one-time revenue went away. Is there some, probably a little bit, but not a lot. Usually it's tied to those local donations. But those are also tied to one-time expenditures. So, does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
So when you're looking at affordability on an ongoing basis, so for example, when the board was talking about one-to-one devices, we want to put money aside for one-to-one devices. You put one-time money aside, once that's spent, there's no additional to put aside. That was a one-time transfer. So you could make a very thoughtful decision like that on a one-time basis, just like if you're regrouping your house and you're doing it on a one-time basis and you're dipping your savings to do that. Okay? But when you're making ongoing decisions, like, my mortgage payment is going to be this now every single month because I'm going to buy a bigger house or I'm going to buy a smaller house. That's when you're going to...
We need that plan for the future.
Do my ongoing revenue streams match my ongoing expenditures? Okay?
Thank you.
So in a nutshell, the combination of the narrative and the spreadsheets and some of the PowerPoint kind of give you either less detail or more detailed information on the budget. If you've had time to look at that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer. If not, I'd like to go on to kind of where we stand as far as our predictions for this year. So this unaudit actuals is showing you how to be closed last year. And what is the impact of that close on this year, right? Because now we have a new beginning fund balance. So if you go to the next slide, we're going to look at how do we project our enrollment? And why is that important when we're looking at the budgets? Because our enrollment drives staffing and it drives the majority of our revenues. So the projected enrollment in the adopted budget was seven thousand five forty-nine. As of day ten, it was seven thousand five hundred fifty-three or a variance of four. So we projected within four students that actually showed up on day ten.
Impressive, I'm very impressed with that.
It's kind of getting closer every year. So then we further break that down, K six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Why do we break it down that way? Because we get different funding levels depending on the grade span. I didn't break out K three, but by K six, I mean teach K to six because transitional kinder is a kinder program. Non-public school, that's what MPS stands for, special day class, and then South County special day class. So that kind of shows you, now, I will tell you that the nine twelve is assuming Gateway College is at seventy. So there could be a little bit more of a variance there because I was not able to confirm with them what their actual ten-day enrollment is. So that, I'm making an assumption here. So Gateway is assumed to be flat for these purposes. If there's a fluctuation or more or less, that would impact this.
And where is Gateway?
It's embedded in the nine twelve.
Okay.
I didn't pull it out. And then I'm giving you the October C-Veds. So C-Veds is the California Basic Educational Data System. It's that second or that first October and Tuesday that everybody reports their enrollment across the state. So I'm giving you what were our C-Veds numbers because looking at those trends and knowing, are we trending up? Are we trending down? Are we flat, important? So October, the year before I got here, it was seventy-five hundred, seventy-four eighty. That's pretty flat in twenty kids, not flat the correct way, but seventy-four thirty-four. Then last year was seventy-five twenty-eight. And now we're projecting about seventy-five fifty-three. There's still a long way to go between now and the first, you can have October and first Tuesday. But indications are we'll be pretty close to that seventy-five fifty number. So pretty flat relatively speaking when you average it over four years, but trending in the right direction.
This is not necessarily relevant to money, but do we know why there are twenty more kids at South County, Sorsio?
That's a great question. We really, they staffed and planned for it. I mean, really, it was staffed for closer to a hundred and thirty. The projections that I was giving for the excess billback that we did for all of the other districts was at the hundred and ten level. But I really don't think a hundred and thirty was as great of a surprise because of how they staffed. They actually added a class.
Okay, great.
Other questions about enrollment? So I will tell you that we did add some at the secondary level, add some sections because at the high schools, Pendlewood High, for example, came in fifteen to twenty students stronger, so we added three or four sections there. CASA actually came in a little bit lower.
And Kenilworth came in a lot higher, didn't it?
Within six.
Within six, oh, okay.
And Pendlewood Junior High came in a little bit lower, about ten, twelve lower. Okay, so...
What about the other junior highs, like, I mean, like, you know, Mary Collins and Pax and...
Is that a three-year skill?
I mean, do they, do you think that maybe some of that, the loss in Kenilworth and...
No, I mean, Pendrove came in, right where we expected with them, like, one. Cherry Valley came in within like six of where we expected, a little bit lower, but not much. Pax came in within, I think, three of where I was projecting. Sixth Grade Academy, I was projecting twenty-eight, that twenty-seven. Cherry Valley, like I said, was about six lower, but up from last year. So they have four hundred and six, four hundred and eight. Last year, they were about three eighty-five.
And those numbers are included in the seven, eight, right?
Kenilworth has eight sixty-six, we projected eight sixty. Pendlewood Junior High, we projected five sixty, they came at five forty-eight.
Oh, like one percent.
Yeah. It's really, really, I mean, it's, you can't predict or project any closer than we're projecting.
Yeah.
Or... Well, again, Gateway might fluctuate a little bit. Okay, so next steps. We're going to, we've actually already been reconciling budget to position control. You know, when we adopted the budget, a lot of vacant positions. So now that we have hiring done, we're reconciling adjustments in staffing. We've made some adjustments in staffing, as I'm sure you're aware. Step in column, I know HR, I've been talking to Holly Camozzi about, here's all of the folks who have turned in units, here's somebody who completed, there's still someone processed. So it's hard to predict exactly where that will end up, but we definitely have people moving from column two to column three and so on and so forth. We're revising our budget based on prior year trends, and so we're looking at our utility accounts. Electricity, we probably still could reduce that a little bit. Water is way up. But you see on the board agenda, we're actually looking at some ways to try to reduce. Water's over three hundred thousand a year, as we know. Water's a huge expense for us. We're going to be recalculating the LCFF. We'll be looking at those ADA projections come first down and seeing how we can tweak those. I know Gary's been leading lots of conversations about free reduced meal applications and how we can try to maximize those for our undidicated account. We have until October thirty-first to get all of those in to maximize our CalHAD numbers. We're already in the process of rolling, of carryover. Like I said, that's almost complete. Adult education, we're looking at that, there's some adjustments there, other funds. For example, the ACES grant is going up, we think about fifteen thousand dollars. We're waiting on the state to give us that final letter. They told me yesterday it should be in the mail this week. Once we get that, we'll be increasing our ACES funds. Continuing to monitor our enrollment trends and then looking at our cafeteria fund and adult education fund. I will tell you the positive thing about cafeteria fund is that our revenues were up. Sales were up last year, so we're hoping to actually reduce the contribution that's budgeted in the adopted budget for this year and follow those trends. So. Questions? I know I've got for a lot of information, there's a lot of information in the packet. Certainly look at the supplemental information, it kind of gives you a breakdown of the ADA by charter, by non-charter. You have debt service, debt service schedules in here, so...
So we'll get the next update in October?
It'll be as of October thirty-first. Usually it comes in December.
That's right, okay.
If we feel like there's a significant change, we want you, we could bring a recommendation over.
Sure.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
As usual, very educational. Okay, we are now, two comments from the public. I have two yellow cards. Okay. Before we start, I like to read a little blurb on top just to kind of remind people what exactly these are and how the board responds to them. So, under Government Code section, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any item of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize districts' policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although the board members cannot discuss items that are not in the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. And most of us take notes, so we're aware of stuff. So, we have two people, Carol Crabble?
Craven.
Crabble? That's close. Confederate flag in the classroom.
Hi.
Hi.
In order to prevent such incidents from happening again, and I'm sure you're all aware of what I'm talking about, so I don't need to go into it. It would be good to know why people did not before now call attention to this flag that has been up since two thousand and fifteen, apparently. Were those who saw it and might have said something intimidated by those in authority who could have taken care of the problem? Were those who knew about the flag unsure that there was support for them in pushing for the flag to be removed? Was there a misplaced or false sense of loyalty or collegiality that kept some of those who knew from speaking out? Or was it just plain ignorance by some who saw the flag and said nothing when people of color, specifically the black students, would not only be offended but traumatized by the ongoing presence of this flag? All of these questions should be addressed on seeking a remedy, one that should be systemic in order to move forward with any faith that the environment that allowed the flag to be up for years will change. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Terry. I'm just going to stick with Terry because I don't want to slaughter your name.
She's told you how to pronounce it.
I know, could you tell me again?
My name?
Last name.
Yeah, I'll say it to you, but you will never remember it. Abodeke.
Abodeke. I will remember it.
My name is Terry Abodeke, and I'm speaking on behalf of TIDE this evening. And TIDE is a group of parents of students with children in Pendlewood City Schools. And they have come together to just try and support this kind of work, social justice and equity. TIDE stands for Training for Inclusivity, Diversity, and Equity in the Pendlewood City Schools. So I'm also here to talk about the Confederate flag that was hanging in the classroom in Kenilworth Middle School since two thousand and fifteen. To many white people in the South and beyond, the Confederate flag is a sign of historic pride and defiance. To many black Americans, the flag stands for white supremacy and racial violence. Today, this symbol often appears at pro-white rallies and is a lightning rod to America's calcifying racial divides and divides. It may be important to learn about the meaning of the flag along with many other types of symbols and flags. And what do these things, what do these symbols stand for? How do they make people feel? That can be an interesting conversation. I think sometimes something like this can be a catalyst to move people to really further understanding. And some people don't realize how these things make other people feel. But certainly, black students should not have to sit in a class with that symbol hanging on the wall any more than Jewish students should sit in a class and have to look at a swastika on the wall. The way the Confederate flag is being used to represent whites' supremacy today in our society, the flag could intimidate forty-seven percent of the non-white students in the schools, not just the African-American students. If the Pendlewood schools had more diversity on their staff, it would benefit everyone because it would bring different views and perspectives to the conversation and help everyone to gain perspective and to hear different points of view. Students need trusted allies to report when they experience racial injustice. And having a real diverse staff would also help with that. And it wouldn't just, just not the diversity that the children could go to. When you have a diverse group of people working on this, everybody can become an advocate because they can gain deeper understanding. As a member of TIDE, we would like to advocate that our administrators, teachers, and students get more training on equity and inclusivity. We talked about this at the community forum on August seventeenth. And by the way, it was wonderful. I so appreciated that forum, and I think the turnout was great, the conversations were great. And I appreciated how you listened, all of you. You know, it really impressed me that you were there to listen, that you really did listen. I found it to be a wonderful day of communication and listening, and I really appreciated it. We all need dialogue and discussion and community to tackle these difficult issues. And training to help all of us to learn best practices to make this dialogue meaningful and effective. We understand that this will be costly and it will take time to implement. But perhaps one teacher at each junior high and high school could attend training and work with the staff to move this work along. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our views.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Reports and activities and correspondence of the school board, we were very busy. There were lots of back-to-school nights. We were at Kenilworth, Pendlewood Junior High School, McDowell, Brant McKinley, Valley Vista, and McNear. I spoke to a government class at CASA, PFT executive meeting, TIDE workshop, presentation of Wi-Fi radiation stuff?
Yeah, Lendry.
Lendry's out. The PEF bash, which was wonderful, and Friends of the River Moonlight Fandango, which I have no idea what that is.
Oh, it's a fundraiser for Friends of the River and the Wetlands Alliance.
Oh, cool, okay.
Great. And also, I didn't know how to put this down. So a friend of mine, Connie Williams, is the, she's a librarian now at the public libraries. Everybody probably knows her.
Yes.
And she's like the exemplar of the perfect librarian. And she was in the district forever. And so she came by today and she gave me this, which was the Argus Courier, Pendlewood Argus Courier from May ninth, nineteen forty-one. And the whole thing was on the Pendlewood school system.
Oh, interesting.
And it has all these pictures and it has, it's really cool. And then talking about the system itself. And so she said that she has a whole packet of information that she would love to, you know, like, maybe display here. And anyway, or come and talk to us about it or whatever. She's like, she's, she really, really has, is a wonderful fund of information. She also said that, as an example of interesting things, is that the idea of consolidation of all of those districts, the controversy has been around since the eighteen eighties.
Sometimes it doesn't surprise me at all.
It may be a while, but maybe it'll change. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you, Mandy. All right. Approval of consent agenda by consolidated notion. Okay. Discussion, questions, issues?
I have a couple. I just wanted to confirm on the nine point two point four, the budget development calendar. I just have a couple of things. I wanted to confirm that the LCAP, the first meeting of the LCAP is November fifth. And that it's the orientation, that's what it says on there. Okay.
November fifteenth, LCAP.
And then I was wondering, I'm going to kind of put David and Ashley on the spot, kind of coming from the community forum and the discussion about communication and, you know, how to get the word out. I would love to see some kind of publicity around the LCAP. You know, just like explaining what it is. you know, just like explaining what it is. What does LCAP mean? Local Control and Accountability, blah, 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 but what does that mean? And have it on our website, have it in, I don't know, I mean, I want to talk to all of you about it. I mean, I just feel like if we, we're trying to get more people onto it, we're trying to get a lot of input from the public, but we need to educate the public about what LCAP is and its importance, make it user-friendly. I don't want to put it all on you, but, you know, how can we do this so that that orientation, we get a lot of people there, and they can decide whether this is a, you know, some kind of committee that they want to invest their time in. But I think right now, most people have no idea what it means and the importance in terms of developing the budget. Why is it on the budget development calendar?
Well, you guys have your office hours, right? You're coming out?
Yeah, tomorrow.
So you can talk about it then with parents, or they come talk to you guys.
In fact, since you brought it up, I just want to, I know a lot of people have left already, but the board wants to start office hours. There can only be two of us at a time, so the first one will be Mandy and myself. We'll be at Valley Vista from eight to ten, and it's open, and come in, talk to us, ask us questions, complain, whatever it is that's on your mind, we're there to listen. So, and that's tomorrow, and then what we're hoping is that we'll have a calendar out. I don't know, we'll probably do it monthly at different places.
And just to, just to the budget development calendar, I've been doing one of these for a long time, and when the LCFF and LCAP became into being, we incorporated them all together because we felt like it was a good communication tool to show how they really go hand-in-hand and to try to communicate out that there is this LCAP process that really does go hand-in-hand with the advisory committee, and that they're really connected in many respects. So it's our attempt to try to do that.
Yeah, I think it's great, and that's why, you know, I was kind of looking at it with that kind of in mind, and then thinking, how do we get the rest of the educational community to look at this? And I'd like to see it posted.
My suggestion, as someone who also works in communications, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, like putting it out on our materials, but amplifying the power of the PTA, because those are the really involved parents that we are, are our kind of campus audience.
Yeah.
And so, people are getting it from multiple authorities, so they're hearing it from teachers, and staff, and us, and PTA.
Well, PTA and school side are communities, so.
Yeah. It just gives it more authority and importance.
Anything else before we vote?
Always. Yes?
I wanted to thank High Point Data Systems. From what it looked like, they really worked hard in trying, with you, in trying to get those costs down.
Yes.
You know, gave us quite a break, so I wanted to thank them. And also, on field trips, there are all these field trips listed, and I just was wondering what the status of accessing LaForte Ranch was, if we have a status.
We can't be asking that right now.
We can't, but we.
Oh, we can't? It's not really.
It's not really what we're talking about.
And it's not agendized?
Oh, okay. I'll teach you.
Well, yeah. I can, I can, I can do that one on Friday night.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say a shout-out to our maintenance and operations team, Ray and Jordan, who really worked with High Point, so I don't want to take credit.
Right.
Certainly, they were doing it in my direction, but they really did a great job. Working with them and Jimmy, who's our lead grounds person, who really focused on how can we improve our irrigation system and try to save water and do a better job managing. And we are the largest property owner in Pedaluma, and we have a lot of acreage from a water perspective to manage, so I just want to give a shout-out to my team. It's a team effort, I certainly don't do all this myself, so thank them, thank the team.
Okay, shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, action items. Agreed with California State University's Cal State Teach intern program, effective August first, two thousand nineteen through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I have a quick question about this, Gary. Is that, is that program similar to the induction program at SCO?
Yes.
It's the same idea, but.
This is an intern program, it's a little bit, so it's their own job.
It's only interns.
They're working on the job all day, or they're on the professional.
Okay.
But they're similar as far as the content.
Okay.
Content's same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Business Services, Resolution nineteen twenty dash oh five, Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Junior High School Districts of the Kansasoma, to authorize the superintendent or designate to accept grant funding allocations from the Pedaluma City Schools District and execute revenue agreements, amendments, and related documents received in fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty as necessary to receive revenue from state and federal agencies.
We have to approve.
Second?
I have a question actually.
Well, you have to wait until you get them, now you're good. I'm Robert.
Approve, second, talk.
We'll get this down.
It was the title, not the.
Yeah, no.
I have a question for Liz, actually. I think this falls under you. So what is the status of the SRO? Is it still the one?
It is, it is still the one, and so, the Department of Justice to back the grant, there's specifically four, four goals to the grant, and the first and primary goal was to restore an SRO for each side of town, splitting, you know, the school sites between two SROs. And right now, we just have one, Danny Miller's our SRO, he's serving both sides, and, you know, we've talked, but the police department right now doesn't have another, another person to give, so we are still with Danny Miller as our SRO for both sides of town right now.
And I, actually, I have a question. I was reading that over. A lot of it seemed like punishment.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if we can use some of that money for maybe smoking cessation classes, or scaring kids about vaping because it's going to kill your lungs.
Right.
More than just punishment.
That, all of the news last week about the new infections and, and I was reading, I did, I did the exact same thing, Ellen, and I went, that's a lot of enforcement.
Yeah, I agree.
Where's the prevention?
Right, exactly. And so, today, I actually had a phone call with Sonoma County to say, where are there pieces in this grant that we, that could kind of write in, more of the preventative elements, and how somebody managing those preventative elements? And so, it is possible, and there's kind of two ways to go about it, and it's either, A, if it could be seen in the context of this as a budget line item, or B, something that then I work to kind of rewrite in the grant. They're saying, at this late stage of the game, because the grant ends in June, re, a budget line item, and shifting it that way is probably going to be the best, the best way to go, to build in some more sort of practices. That said, we are still in the charge of these, you know, it looks like sting operations. I've been reading into the grant too. So, and then, so I have a meeting with Dan Miller, our SRO, coming up next week, to talk about how we're going to meet the goals of, you know, of the things that are, that are currently.
Well, we have to.
We have to.
And I would add, I would add that it's not well articulated here, but part of the grant is providing guidance specialist support, and part of the guidance specialist support already written into the grant, although it's not a huge amount that, you know, we've been looking at. But there is guidance specialist support in order to do some of the classes and the prevention and, and some of that. So there is some of that in here. It certainly is not the largest portion.
Right. And that's, that's where I purpose to shoot that.
And it's a little bit of a challenge on that, that, truth be told, when we were going down this grant pathway, we were trying to get a guidance-heavy grant, and they pushed back.
DOJ, really?
DOJ would not allow us to do that.
So they prefer punitive rather than.
They like an SRO law.
The short version is, we're going back around on the same topic now that we are nearing, I mean, we're near, we can see the finish line on this thing, and see if we can get some additional support. So we're going to go back at it again, but it wasn't because of want, want to do, it was, but at the same time, we want to make sure we meet the terms of the grant because we would like to apply for this money in current years, and regardless of, you know, what we decide to do with that, we don't want to, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot, so to speak, and make sure we're in good standing.
Does this money apply to the K through eight schools as well, or is it just high school enforcement?
It was junior high and high school primarily.
It was targeted around junior high and high school.
So it's seven to twelve.
And it ends, this is a good example of one time.
Right.
Because when this grant goes away at the end of June, there is no carryover allowed. It's a reimbursement grant, so we, we actually submit, here's all of our prices, I'll write us a check, and it's kind of going to use it or lose it, but that's why Liz has been looking into, can we apply, there's another round, so we want to apply again because our SRO then would go away at the end of June.
So when you're looking at that budget, and we're looking at that as restricted monies, that, there's seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, and that's right there.
That's a lot of money.
And so, and since, since it's a payback, we have to show that we're meeting all the SROs and the punitive and all that.
Within our control. Within our control, okay. Yeah, we literally, no, well, they, it's actually, they literally go through our expenditures that we submit for reimbursement, and they have actually rejected things, and we've had to go back and say, okay, like the vape devices came in a little bit higher, and how do we amend the budget, and, you know, so they're very, they scrutinize everything that we turn in for reimbursement.
Has the vape device been working yet? Because last we heard, it's still working.
So that's the piece that I was contacting Sonoma about, because they're, they're in, they, they alert, they almost over-alert. And so, we're, we want somebody who can come in and work on a system that, that works for the campus, as far as sensitivity, as far as having cameras that match with the devices, as far as what, you know, what's the system for deploying campus supervisors, how are we using the data, and that's the systems piece that I want to build into this.
For the record, maybe against cameras and bathrooms.
Yeah.
Well, there's a school, there's a school in Alabama that just took the doors off the bathroom stall.
Oh, that's right.
So that they could, boys wouldn't vape.
That's important.
For the record, the cameras would be in the breeze ways, seeing people coming in and out, so you get kind of tied.
That makes more sense.
We would never propose.
If you have a motion on the table.
Yes, so, discussion, are you done? Shuvi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Approval of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and audited actials for the Pedaluma City Elementary.
Open element. Ten point two.
GAN limit, just skipped something?
Yeah. Ten point two.
The GAN limit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Standard GAN.
Yes. Adapting the GAN limit.
Jarvis would be very upset.
Oh, good. Good.
Well, I absolutely like Howard Jarvis.
Can I just say it? I object to the GAN limit, but I know I have to. Philosophically.
So, motion, do I have it?
I'm going to approve.
Second. Any comments?
I don't like Howard Jarvis.
Neither do I, but.
I don't, that's my comment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we can move on to the unaudited, un-audited actials.
Move to approve the un-audited actials.
And we've already kind of sourced, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think there was like three people.
Okay.
We're just having a session.
Yes. Dress code discussion is our discussion.
I would love a presentation. I heard there's going to be one.
I want to hear it.
Had a long conversation with CASA students about the dress code.
So, we have a, so presenting with me this evening is going to be Becky Lofton over at San Antonio, and Rise Academy, and Valley Oaks, and then Stephen Owens coming from CASA.
Good evening.
So, we are going to present our dress codes. So, in the Pedaluma City Schools vision, as it outlines, we're basically, you know, looking for students that are, you know, have high achievement in rigorous and relevant curriculum, and what I highlighted there, you know, that early caring scene, environment, there's diversity scene, and the community is supporting our educational programs, and the second one, where I made bold, all students graduate prepared for success in work, advanced study, and in the community. And the reason I highlighted that is because CASA Grande recently did a graduate profile of their own and said, what does it look like to prepare for success in work? And so, Stephen was going to speak to that.
Can we go to the next slide? So, in two thousand seventeen, we were preparing for a WASC report, which is a conference of study of our high school, and Eric Backen, the then-principal, wanted to do a graduate profile. And so, part of the graduate profile was to have empathy interviews. The empathy interviews were to have staff go out to the community, talk to business leaders, talk to employers and other folks that have, have our students when they graduate. And so, the primary question is, what is it that you're looking for in a graduate? Not necessarily CASA graduate, but a high school graduate. A number of the items that were mentioned were the soft skills, you know, can you look somebody in the eye? Are you on your digital device all the time? Can you think critically? Do you have an opinion? Can you offer an opinion and talk? And one of the other things that they came up with was, be highly employable. And one of our students, they did a placard of this, we have it on video, and this is what came out of the graduate profile and the interviews. As a CASA grad, I am highly employable. I have these skills, attitude, and a work ethic to be a success in the workplace. I'm a self-starter. I am reliable, flexible, punctual, and I have integrity, and I present interest in professional workplace. So based on these empathy interviews, we had a graduate profile, and we created our vision from that and our student learner outcomes for the WASC. And so, we revised our dress code twenty eighteen to coincide with our goals and our vision, and our opening statement to our dress code is that we want our students to look professional or to treat their attire as they're in a professional workplace. And that's how we work toward our dress code, very simple.
So with that, I didn't know how much you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, is the dress code different at CASA than it is at Pedaluma?
That's what I'm going to get into, yeah. This gets into that, and the answer is yes. But we'll dive into that.
Oh, it does.
So, we can, so I didn't know how much you had a chance to actually just dive into the general board policy. I put it here, if you wanted a time to read it, or should I just advance through what our board policy states?
It's ready.
Okay, okay. So this is, it's a few slides, I'll just let you read it. The Board of Education believes appropriate dress and grooming contribute to a productive learning environment. The Board expects students to give proper attention to personal cleanliness and to wear clothes that are suitable for school activities in which they participate. Students' clothing must not present health or safety hazard or a distraction which would interfere with the educational process. And it continues. Students and parents slash, students and parents slash guardians shall be informed about dress and grooming standards at the beginning of the school year and whenever these standards are revised. A student who violates these standards shall be subject to appropriate disciplinary action. Gang-related apparel. The principals, staff, and parents and guardians establish a reasonable dress code that prohibits students from wearing gang-related apparel when there is evidence of a gang presence that disrupts or threatens to disrupt the school's activities. Such a dress code may be included as part of the school's safety plan and must be presented to the Board for approval. The Board shall approve the plan upon determining that it is necessary to protect the health and safety of the school's students. And it continues, so, and then moving into the code of regulations, a people who goes to school without proper attention, having been given to their personal cleanliness or need is addressed, may be sent home to properly prepare for school, or shall be required to prepare himself or herself for the school group before entering. And I think that may be. That's it. So you can see that that is all it says about dress code in our, in our board policy, so we can move on to the next one. And so, to your question, how do sites implement this, and do they implement it differently? And the answer, to some extent, is yes. In talking to the elementary school principals, many of them haven't updated it any time recently. So, in kind of looking at what they have on, on the website, there were things, you know, that in some codes had like, students can't wear cowboy boots to school, students, you know, must wear angle-aged skirts. So, elementary school may need a little bit of.
Oh, my God.
But they also, they don't have as many dress code issues that.
That was odd.
So what I did then was, I really dug down with the middle schools and the high schools who do continually rework their dress codes with their students, with their staff, and engage in these discussions regularly. Pedaluma Junior High and Calworth utilize essentially the same dress code. What they do in the first part of their dress code is reiterate that we're looking for students to, you know, create an active spirit and attitude where students are performing their best and feel comfortable, and so, we'll move forward, and I can show you the specifics. So this is what they say students may not wear. When they got together, they did work with their staff and to kind of come up with the code, and you'll find this in their planners, because this is to the board policy of making parents aware of what it is. So, you can't wear clothes that are transparent, show undergarments sexually explicit, use profane language, base or exploits a group, promotes alcohol. promotes alcohol, drugs, tobacco gangs, or uses a predominance one color that may be gang-related. Again, to the board policy, that's something that they included. And then they go into what students can wear, or I'm sorry, what students should, must wear. Clothes, toe shoes, and you can read those shirts that have straps connecting back to front, cover the chest of the torso, wear your hat outside openly, and then P E, closed during P E class. And that is it. So if you forward through there, and that's it, it says these are guidelines that, you know, we'll, we'll work with the students. And they may be asked, again, back to board policy to, to put the appropriate clothes on. So that's what the middle school basically communicates with their families during the school year. And then to the high schools example, I've used what the one from Casa, so Stephen can speak to that, and then one from our alternative schools, so that can speak to that.
Yeah, the one at Casa, just the opening line is a little different than what you have at the middle schools, but essentially they're the same. You know, in terms of what we are finding that our students are wearing. We do have an emphasis on some of the things, especially in the high school levels, of things like, you know, some kids want to promote their local brewery, Lagunitas IPA, but that's not going to be allowed, so those are the things that we stress not to have cookies and other things that are on their clothing. But essentially what the middle school is, we have the same thing as from there, this is everybody here. But we do try to stress, since we do have the career pathways at the school, to try to dress them in a professional demeanor. That's how we kind of use that as a guideline, we'll use as a dress code. Hope you went with the next one?
Yeah, just a second.
Please. And then, again, the pants must be passed up. The way we try to discourage students from having, boys especially, having their pants tagging where you can see their undergarments. Shoes, we want shoes to be worn at all times. And again, the rebasing or things that might And these are some of the specific examples we have here. Bottom line, shookeys, Lagunitas, Hooters, we And then we have here, which has been, it's also a predominance of any one color that may be considered gang affiliation or contributing to another state's school environment. We have that in there, has its theater expression if they're going to be in a classroom. And again, the same disposition, if a student violates the dress code, we will ask them to alter their clothes or go home if necessary. But we never try to embarrass the student in terms of what he or she wears. We may ask them to cover up. That's about it.
So the next goes into the alternative, and then we, do you want questions?
I can ask later.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so for us, our students are coming to us already behind academically, and many, many of them are struggling with emotional trauma. We take it really seriously to help these kids find their way going forward, and that includes helping them think about how they present themselves to the world. So we take professionalism very seriously, as Stephen mentioned. We want them to come and think about presenting themselves to the professional world. If you come to my campus and we invite you to come to any of our campuses and look at how our students are dressed, you will be so proud of the way our students come to school and present themselves. We have many of the same things, you know, no drug-related items on their clothing, and that's a challenge because there's always a new company out there with a cool new logo, and so trying to keep on top of that. It, it's, you know, it's a, an interesting conundrum for us because we're constantly adding to the list of things that kids can't wear. But it gets back to the idea that we want them to present themselves the way they went to an employer. If you've been at Pedaluma any length of time, you know that our gang-related issues go up and down. Right now, we're seeing a preponderance of tagging happening, so there seems to be an increase in gang activity. We're predominantly blue, and it's mostly Latino boys. However, there are the red gang, and there's a lot of white boys in that. So when I think about how my students present themselves at school, I am really thoughtful about those colors and the things that they wear that might make another student feel intimidated and then not feel comfortable accessing their, their curriculum or their education. So, no pajamas and slippers, it's not their bedroom, we want them to think about coming to school. When you go to college and pay for it, you can wear pajamas, but we don't do it in hi, at our high school. Anything that's culturally or racially insensitive, profanity, and, and basically it's, it's the same. We have a stockpile of really lovely T-shirts to swap out, but I rarely dress code a student anymore. Our culture is such that students know what we expect of them, and they come that way and respect the school and respect what we ask of them.
So we can see, and well, we can move into questions, but generally it's just how every site has implemented the policy and the board policy, you know, hitting on the gang clothing as in board policy. And then hitting on what will happen if, you know, if a student is dress code violation, which is just have the student change, you know? And so that's, that's how, where we currently are addressing.
Is there a reason why, like, we're, we're talking about kids being able to move from one high school to the other to take classes? Well, if they have different dress codes, it just seems to me that there, there should be like a uniform, I don't know.
I hear what you're saying, but I would say if my kids went over to Casa to take a class, which is, has happened, they are not going to get dress coded there because of the dress code that I have. And if their kids come to my school, they're not going to be dress coded because of the dress code they have. So there may be subtle differences, but the big differences that we care about, no gang-related stuff, no, those are the things that we really look for when we look at students.
And have you done a comparison of the Pedaluma High and Casa Grande dress codes?
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Okay, so I, I would imagine, since ours is, if you look at the board policy, it is very much written off of that, and I would imagine Pedaluma Highs would be the same as well. We do have our dress code, or whatever you want to call it, guidelines that are in our student handbook, so that is posted online. So, it's available for all the public to see. And then, I would imagine Pedaluma Highs, I can't speak to them or speak for them, but I would imagine theirs would be as well. Could you all speak to the process of developing the site dress code, what kind of engagement it was, but how do you develop that?
You want to take it away?
Yeah, I'll take it away. I'm sure the original framework or guideline was implemented far before I became an educator. We, we don't have cowboy boots in our thing, but what we've done is we've implemented, we try to have it more closely related to what is more, I guess, current. So what we did, we had our teachers, we had students, we had parents, all part of our WASP profile, or WASP process. And during the graduate profile, we had community members, teachers who did the interviews, and we distilled all this information, and we tried to implement that into our dress code that would make it relevant for what our vision statement is. So we, we had a lot of people involved, and it was a very involved process. It took about two years to get from that point to where we are now. And what we did is we conflated our comprehensive review of the WASP with the graduate profile to make it a more meaningful document. And it sounds like there aren't many violations these days. I think kids get it, you know? It's like somebody driving down the freeway, they go a hundred miles an hour, far and few between. So, I think they get it. And I think kids want to make sure that they are there, they're there to learn, they take things very seriously. There, there's always going to be an outlier. Sure. So.
The first few days of school, we have a student body presentation, and we talk about all the things that our school can provide for the students and the things that we ask for in return. And one of them is we explain the board policy regarding dress code, and then we talk about what our board policy is. And every year, there's something that a student will bring up and we'll discuss it. And so it's a negotiable, we have a few negotiable items. One of the things that was on, on the dress code when I took over the school was no sweatpants. I'm fine with that if you guys don't wear sweatpants. So, we do listen to what they say when it's not going to affect the overall kind of message that we want the students to be sending.
And, and I invite anybody to come to our campus anytime, you know, come to Casa and see for yourself. And that's the best way you can take a look and see what's going on.
Well, so I hear from female students all the time about, mostly at Pedaluma, so not actually either of your campuses, but bra straps, like, what, the message that they're getting either from teachers or from staff that, you know, walk around is that they shouldn't have bra straps showing, and there's still the language of it being a distraction for the boys. And that's still being, coming down from staff. So, I think opening it, like, I think bra straps and sweatpants are kind of on the same level where you wouldn't wear either to a job job, but we can all agree that they're not actually a distraction, and if boys are looking at girls, that's the boys' problem, not the girls' problem.
And I spoke with Gio, who's on our subcommittee, and so, and he said their language is that was actually even slightly more vague than Casa's in the same, in the same spirit, though, it was just, you know, wear appropriate clothing, et cetera. He, as far as I know administratively, and maybe that's not kind of been widespread, or maybe they haven't had that, that discussion in a few years, but it sounds like they're not, you know, they're not disciplining things like bra straps or making girls put on shirts to cover up a bra strap from, at, at least from the office angle, the administrative angle. It may be that, you know, teachers may be saying, hey, that violated dress code, and they just need to have that staff conversation.
They used to have, you know, you couldn't wear spaghetti straps.
Yeah, and that's not, that's
At Pedaluma High.
Yeah, not the case anymore, it's not in the policy.
Yeah, that maybe just like that, maybe there's some teachers
Yeah, that's definitely still the message a lot of the, of the
Okay. And I can, I'll let, I'll let the Pedaluma High administration know, because it sounds to me more like maybe it's just because it used to be in the policy, that's still something that may get some staffing forces that administration wouldn't necessarily force, maybe run a conversation, getting on the same page with, with dress code.
Because I love the idea that, like, students and families came forward and want to be more professional and want these things. I definitely don't think it seems like a top-down thing at all, so I love that they want that, but the girls I know also want to
Have you seen Sonoma County Profile of the Graduate? The six components in the profile of the graduate don't specifically identify dress, but they all speak to a student being employable and being professional. So I love the fact that our, our county has put together something that really underscores what it is that we're trying to accomplish with our students.
You know, also, that reminds me that, that, you know, with senior projects, having, having been involved with those for like almost twenty years and seeing the progression of how professional the students dress now, and appropriately, so they don't come, you know, with a, you know, full-on tie and, you know, like a three-piece suit, but, which I've seen. But, you know, they're just, they're, they're like, they're dressed professionally, and, and I don't think you, I don't know whether you have to beat them over the head anymore, but
Not anymore.
Although, so, I think they really have a sense that, you know, and, and I think that, that one time really helps them in getting ready, and they seem to be getting that a lot. I mean, I didn't see, I never had a comment about
Although I was on your campus, I, I talked to, to a government class, which I love to do because I like teenagers. But, they, they, the dress code did come up. And when, I guess maybe they don't see the, the, I don't know, they don't see that it's wrong. There was a kid who was saying he had a, he was wearing a sweatshirt that had a Playboy bunny on it, or bunny on it. And he was asked to take it off, and he didn't understand why. And then another kid, and I couldn't really explain it. I could explain the kid who had the, the Jack Daniels thing on his shirt. I said, okay, I, I, I know that one.
Well, it, in the Casa language, it clearly talks about exploiting a group and Playboy exploits
Women, okay.
Not anymore as much, it's a little more female power now.
I just, you know, I just, so, it was just stuff that I gathered from this class. And I said, okay, well, I'll, I'll find out for you, you know, so I just, most, all the kids in the class looked great, don't get me wrong.
Oh, no, no.
And they were all dressed appropriately in there, but it was just, these were questions that came up. They're not really understanding why, because it doesn't, didn't say, you know, go drink Jack Daniels. I said, yeah, but, you know, and the same with the bunny, it didn't say, go clothes naked. But, you know, or whatever the bunny talks about. But there just seemed to be a little bit of confusion about what is okay, what isn't okay, and why certain things are not.
Yeah, I mean, just one quick side note, when I was growing up, or not quite growing up, I was already grown up, I loved the band Nirvana. And then I see so many kids wearing the band Nirvana T-shirts, I go, wow, you like Nirvana?
They don't know, they don't know.
So it's a generational thing.
Yes.
So I can understand where there's that generational gap or that knowledge gap there generationally. And then it's our job as administration, we try to very much, is to explain why it may be inappropriate.
And why it's exploitive.
Yeah.
I did once have a student say to me, and it not, not in this district, but generally the dress codes around drugs and alcohol. And he said, so if I come to school tomorrow, and sure, it says, it says Guinness and gold, and it has a harp on it, but it doesn't say anything about beer.
That's the phrase.
Obviously, they have a drunker.
Yeah. Well, that's good, that's good news.
Offensive Guinness.
Yeah, when I went to school, I think that's what it was.
Harp, yeah.
And they measured our skirts.
Ooh.
Yeah, it was bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The fandango, I saw you across the way.
Oh.
We bought the casidero, we Isn't it a beautiful place?
It's a wonderful place.
Okay. Future business.
Yes. So I've invited Nancy Brown from Sonoma County Office of Emergency Management to our next meeting to talk about the PG&E power de-energization, which is going to have significant impact throughout Sonoma County, so much more than, than it's being communicated in the public. So I'll try to give you the short version, but I'll, it's best to have, you know, her explain it. We were at a pseudo-emergency meeting yesterday with the superintendents, and she was sharing that they're, they're, they're trying to get the word out to retail, to homes, to schools of what this impact is. I think many people are aware, they've talked about shutting down the grid, but I think people are thinking of that kind of like, yeah, the transformer goes out for a little while, it's a little more complicated than that. So let me try to explain it as best I can. Again, she's going to come and do a presentation, and I'm meeting with our superintendents in Pedaluma next week. Got a variety of meetings. We are, most of Sonoma County is a red flag area, meaning we meet a certain criteria for being a threat for power line starting fires. I'm just going to do the simplest form. The issue for us is even though we may not be a high fire area, we are on the grid. Which means when they shut power down on the grid, we're on that tree. So we get affected just as if we're right smack down in the middle of coffee park, okay? So, PG&E does not shut grids down, that's not what they've done before. They actually are trying to figure out how to actually do that, because it's not a process that they go through.
Why don't they just bury the wires?
There, there isn't a lot that's going to take a, a call to shut the grid down. It has to be low hu, a red flag area, which all Sonoma County basically is, low humidity, sustained winds, twenty-five mile an hour winds, approximately forty-five mile per hour, per hour gusts, which is basically our October. Dry fuel on the ground and on-the-ground observations. They will try to give us two days' notice, that, because they obviously have weather patterns. And then they will try to give us another twenty-four hour notice before they turn electricity off, and then they will try, and some try to let us know right before they shut down.
And then how long are they projecting?
Well, so that's the million-dollar question, that when the grid gets shut down, there's things that have to happen before the grid becomes powered back up. Two crit, critical things are the conditions have to be, no longer exist. And then they have to do an individual inspection of every single transmission line throughout all of Sonoma County.
Wow.
That, depending on who you talk to, will take between three and five days. So your power, when it goes down, will be off between three or five days. Our school power, when it goes down, will be off between three and five days. The consultant
Minimum.
The consultants are saying that this could happen on an average of six times per year.
Well, they have to do a very fine
PG&E, PG&E is saying no, it'll probably happen a couple times a year.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
And all those people that
So Here's our, so our challenge is, we're, we're going to be meeting as a, we're meeting with association, federation, to try to make sense of all this. The, the challenge is that this is not considered emerg, an emergency by the tradition, like a natural emergency like a firewood. By the, by the Department of Finance, which means that schools are not automatically going to get waived out for
Being closed.
What they call the J-13, which we filed when we, when we were off for, for fires, and it reimbursed us. So, they're telling us now that the new norm, welcome to the new norm, and the new norm is two things. One, if you're a community member, you probably don't want to stock up on food in September and October because your power may go out. Just try to keep, keep a week's, maybe a week's worth of food. Just try to keep, keep a week's, maybe a week's worth of food, a freezer, a freezer. That if you're a school district, you have to build in emergency days into your calendar. You have to do that. If you don't have them in your calendar, the state's, and you haven't exhausted those days, then the state will not necessarily approve a waiver for you because the grid went down, because the grid's not considered an emergency. It's a preventative shutdown. It's not an emergency. It doesn't fall under the emergency category by the federal government or by the state government.
But.
And so because of that, it has, it has, um, retirement implications, it has funding implications. There's all kinds of things.
Health implications.
So, um, I'm inviting Nancy. Nancy's just, Nancy really literally is, is just a facilitator. She has nothing to do with this. She's part of the Office of Emergency Services. They see this issue and they're trying to get to as many people as they can to explain the situation. We're going to try to come up with a plan, but you can imagine, like retail, what happens in a retail zone that's down for five days?
What happens to people?
This is uncharted territory. I just want you to know, this isn't coming out of our imagination. This is coming from, this is coming from what really is happening in the state. Um, it's better, better heard if you hear it directly from the source. I invited her, she graciously, graciously agreed to come. We'll have a better idea of what some of our plans are. We're, we're, we're meeting, um, we're trying to be fairly proactive now. We're trying to meet with our, for example, our energy management company to see if there's possibility that we can pull off our solar off the grid and utilize solar. Which, we're trying a variety of things. We, we, we're, we're have to, we're going to have to explore the realities of our school calendar and that we might have to be going to something that's unlike something, anything that we've done before. This is something that's not unusual if you're in upstate New York. You know, they build, they build in snow days, they build that in. This is going to be, this looks like this is, this is our new normal and the state's going to force us down that road. That's all I got to share about it. Uh, it, it's going to, it's going to take a, a yeoman's, uh, effort to, to pu, push us through. Most immediately, what we're trying to plan for is what are we going to do with our own perishable items? Because we've lost food in the past because of power outages and it was a significant amount of money. So Chris and I have already had conversations about that. She's going to explore some different options. Um, so there's a lot of moving pieces to this.
Fortunately, we have fuel on hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Except that obviously you can't run the pump, but you know, you get the oil. I'm sorry, I'll.
It is possible.
That's a really lovely thought.
It is possible that our, that our solar grid may help us. How much, I don't know if it will at all. But even that won't, won't, won't address this issue. You know, we're, we're looking at right now, trying to be realistic about, is there ways that we can just keep power, power in fire, fire?
Lights and fireworks.
Most people, the reality is, most people are, you know, you can survive a day with power out if it's that day, but you can't, you can't typically survive beyond that.
The good thing is all of our water and sewer is not dependent on power.
Well, that's the other thing, because we learned that the hard way in the brand new schools, which we don't have any. The brand new schools all have the, the automatic flushes. Those are all on power.
Yeah.
So. So, and, and.
Thank God we have the toilet seat too, though. Cut out.
And the black button. The button, that's, that's on power too. So there's no.
All that stuff is all, those are all powered.
What about water? I, I know tomorrow's, we lose power. We'd have to set.
Well, the schools, the school districts that have wells are going to, are, are.
We're sitting, we're on, we're on city water.
That's not, that's not our issue.
Okay, unlike where I live, we're on subject and we've got water.
So I.
No air. No air.
We, we talked, uh, a lot of things that came up at both.
That's right. We had to take attendance by hand.
But you'd have to find it across.
Figuring out GPA, handheld calculator.
You're, you're talking about a year round.
So the, the other thing is, the other, the other thing for future is we'll, at our next, um, at our next board meeting, we will do updates, uh, from the groups, from the different groups that, that were, um, that were facilitating on the seventeenth.
Oh, that's what I was saying.
And we'll give you some, we'll give you some next steps of where we're, we're at with different issues, but we still.
That's next time?
Yeah, but we still have some things that we need to, we need to be able to do before that, um.
The real challenge is that there's shifting climate.
Yeah.
Used to be September and October were the adverse months generally, right? But last year was November.
Yeah.
Because we didn't get any rain. We had some rain in October and then we dried up. So really with the shifting of the climate change, those criteria, it's really not just September, October. It's really also associated with that.
Yeah.
October, yeah.
So we're trying to streamline. Um, we've got a lot of presentations coming up in the next couple of months. We've got, we have a group that we want, we've been trying to get coordinated from Casa Grande, students that want, we want to have come speak. But this next meeting is going to be, um, she's going to spend a, a, a good chunk of time, twenty to thirty minutes, talking about this situation and then we'll, we'll share out, we'll do some discussion and share out on the, of the seventeenth. So that's, that, that'll, that'll be the meat of our.
Would her presentation be something more flowers and red and yellow?
Well, here's the good thing, because we have it on camera.
Yeah.
We're going to be sending that, we're going to be sending, getting that out and sending that out to our families with our communication about how we're going to handle this. So we're trying to figure out the, the what, if it happens, what, what's going to, what we're going to do because our communications will be spotty, you know, everything is so dependent now on, on telecommunications and the internet. But we'll communicate that, we'll communicate, communicating that, starting to communicate a message, Ashley and I have already met, um, out and raising the awareness. We want to make sure that, um, our families take a look at that, watch that presentation because this is way more than just a school district. A school district is just a little teeny bit of this. This is going to be, you know, this is not only, you know, I don't know what percentage of, of, of Petaluma parents work in Sonoma County. I mean, a lot work in, in, in Marin, but there's a lot that work in Sonoma County and that's, if there's no, nothing on the grid, that's going to set, who knows what's going to happen? So it's, I'm surprised that this, this conversation hasn't, I'm not hearing about it more different.
Like think about all the lights that will work, all of the.
Traffic lights.
I would have never have known that Sonoma was part of the grid.
Yes, and that's the thing.
I mean, the, the way that they've been saying it's just in the fire areas and it's not going to be that bad and.
This doesn't affect Southern California. Southern California doesn't have this system. They have a system that's not, that depends on wires touching.
Yeah, there's some.
We, you know, we have an old system and it has to be replaced eventually, but that will take, that'll be past our lifetime. I'll hopefully, I'll definitely finish.
Yep.
Does maybe it was like.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to.
The service that we start using for captioning will do captions in foreign language.
That would be dope, yeah. Do caption that in English and in Spanish, yeah.
Thanks.
Perfect.
So we're, we're to follow on this, so we'll bring that stuff back.
And you said that the community forum stuff will come back?
Yeah, that's all coming in the next meeting.
Good thing climate change is a.
Well, related to the community forum, um, I keep just pointing at Liz, so. So if, if we could talk about, or if you could address also, when you talk about the different, your sessions. Basically, I mean, a lot of white supremacy came up as topics of discussion during your sessions. It came up tonight, it came up at the last meeting, it's all over Facebook. And I know that we have these resolutions, but like how do they actually look on campuses, like?
Are they being enforced?
Yeah, or how do we enforce them? Are the administrators talking to the teachers, teachers talking to students, like what's the training? Like how do we actually tangibly put these resolutions into action to support our students?
So I think that's, that's what we can do. We can talk about what are those next steps. I think the part that, that, um, is the frustrating thing, and I appreciate Ty because Ty's been pretty patient. This takes time because we have, I'll give you the example. We, we have a professional development vehicle with, in our shared decision-making. We have a whole committee that deals with professional development. So the professional development we're talking about, it's going to affect CSEA members, it's going to affect PFT members, it's going to affect administration, so we have to, we have to figure out, and it was, we have to figure out, well, what, you know, what role does everyone play in all of that in making that decision? Because if we're doing PD, if we're doing this, we're not doing something else. It's a finite, it's a finite thing. And so we want to make sure that we have, we take that to committees to talk about, what are the implications of this, what would it look like? You know, I'm sure that it's, you know, I mean, I think down the road, we'll get into more detail on, um, next, next board meeting, but obviously we need to do some kind of a trainer of trainers model because it has to be self-sustaining. We can't keep bringing people in. We have to have people that, with that, are on staff that can get compensated to do the trainings, you know, year in, year out as we, as we go forward and then get the updates and things. So, um, but we don't want to jump the gun. It's, the, the push would be, well, like jump out and go and look for vendors. We haven't even had this conversation with the committee, so we need to have that first. So it's a little bit slow, you gotta go slow and thorough to get where we need to go.
Nothing moves fast in education land.
That's, I completely agree and, and I just want to throw out kudos to Ty though, because this is a group of motivated parents and teachers. I went to their first workshop on Sunday.
Yeah.
They were filled, uh, and these were folks who, you know, donated, uh, two hours earlier Sunday, hopped up fifty bucks a head because they see a problem in our schools and they want to fix it. And, and I, I really do appreciate what they're trying to do is, uh, find the, uh, the allies at each school to start a culture, to, to change a culture from the parent, from the teacher outward. And, and part of what we're talking about with the professional development, that's, we need that too. That's going to come later, I recognize that. But, uh, I want to support Ty and help them to do the groundwork, uh, in the meantime.
In every interaction we've had with them, they've been consistent about that. They, they are here to support and we feel that. And so we, we, you know, we, like all our amazing organizations that we've got from mentoring on, you know, we, we definitely see them as an asset in this process. We just want to make sure we, 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 we've got to juggle, what are we going to offer here with other professional development that staff wants or feels like they need?
And just for the record in the future, people will still have to donate their time on a Sunday, but, um, it'll all be free for teachers and staff from here on out.
The Ty meetings?
The Ty meetings and.
I want to go, but I just.
That's okay. Um, and it's also sliding scale if you're not. So for example, I make very little money. So I bought my ticket today for fifteen dollars instead of fifty because I'm broke.
Okay.
I just saw the same subject. Remember that question?
Sure.
Yes.
So when we made, we made the resolution, um, recently, did that go out through, um, to teachers and like through their emails? Wouldn't that be just a good spot?
Did it go out to everybody?
Did.
I'm sure it did.
Because it takes, it takes a long time to create. And when you have those sorts of things, seeing that in writing in your email box is certainly problematic.
I assumed it had.
I just assumed it.
Yeah, so you have to see your professional email.
I think we send emails to everybody.
Just, just asking. I don't know if you see it there.
I'm checking.
I don't see the letter out, but.
Yeah, I'm checking, thanks. Okay, that's it.
No, Maddie had something else, no.
You had something? Did you have future business? No?
No, just because I, it went out.
I have two. One thing, the office hours, um, uh, I, I want to kind of, us to think about has when we can report back on that and how we report back on it, um, you know, what things, you know, everybody feels they need to hear from the office hours. I'm assuming that it can go under the report on activities and they just have a summary of, that would be a good place for it. Various things that came up.
I think it would also be good to have it on the Facebook and, I mean, not really Instagram because it's not.
So we could send like a summary from, to Ashley to have it on there?
Yeah. And then activities of the school.
Just working on Ashley's work.
Activities of the school board as well would be a good place.
I think it would be great to have like a little thing on that website.
Well, yeah, that too, but I'm just saying at the meeting.
Um, and then the only other thing is that I read this book, The Governance Core, and I talked to Gary about this.
No, not very thoroughly at all.
No, never. I don't ever, you have to keep a highlight.
Okay, okay, so the point.
So the point is, is that I'd like, um, everybody to be, I think Gary said that he was going to try to get a copy for everybody. And it's about, it's specifically around governance, um, in school boards.
Great work, giving us homework.
Well, they're talking about it, you know, a book group. Um, and then, um, seeing how all of you liked it or not, or thinking that it would possibly be helpful. I found it super, super interesting and helpful about just our role and since we're all relatively new, it just seemed, it just, it, it really clicked for me as to my, you know, what I'm supposed to be doing here and how I interact with the community. And so then I thought, um, then we could kind of see if people wanted to and then we could do a discussion group. Remember Derek, when we did our, um, our handbook and we talked about having discussion groups? And you could have a discussion group and it's, uh, it doesn't necessarily have an agenda, but it is, um, public. So we can have members of the public there and you have a topic that you talk about or you don't, or it's just like a discussion. And we get, I thought we could just discuss this. We could have a facilitator and, um, and she could help us kind of work through how this might look in our district for us, for our board. So anyway, that's kind of a future business thing, so, um, if we get this book and, there's no timeframe really on it, it says.
Professional development.
Professional development for the board.
Okay, anything else?
Sooner the better.
Okay, so we are moving on to signing of papers. Gary, did you want to talk about this? Two would now be the time?
Do, go ahead and do student discipline.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, part of this is very happy news. Um, these are suspended expulsions and these students are now in good standing. And there's a lot of them. I'm just going to say the numbers. I'm just going to go through and say the numbers. So five, two, number eight, twenty-one, nine dash eighteen, ten dash six, one dash twenty-four, five dash five, twenty-six, eight, thirty-one, one, thirty-three, twice, twenty-two, fifteen, six, nine, ten, thirty-six, seven, one, two, four, thirty-two, six, nineteen, two, thirty-four, five, eleven, thirty-seven, eleven again. That's, why?
This is my favorite.
Because they, and we're not going to do this in the future, but it, it, the numbering started over every year. So if they got, it's just going to tell in two different years, you can have two number ones or two.
Okay.
Now we're just going to count numbers forward.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, thirty-one, twenty-one, twelve, twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and twenty-three. So all those students got in trouble and now they are back in good standing. And then we have some students that were fully expelled and now they are again in good standing. Four, eleven dash one, twelve, six, twenty-nine, twenty, fifteen, twenty-five, twenty-four and eight. So that's that.
So you need a motion to, to move, uh, to place these students back into good standing?
I'm going to get all of these students back in good standing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Nope. Good. Okay, next one, not so good news. Case number two. A case has been presented to the Board of Education that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion for the Board to suspend the expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in an alternative district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand nineteen, twenty. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the 2019-2020 school year. Motion?
Move to suspend the expulsion under those terms.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
3.2 is a compromise and release agreement signed by, um, student district's family on 8/26/19, placing the student in NPS, partially funded, $38,000 for three years. Waiving all claims and indemnification, we're looking for approval of that.
I'm going to approve that, um, like, whatever.
Compromise and release.
Compromise and release.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
3.3 is, um.
I'm Robert, I have to do it all.
Public employee dis, uh, release, employee 2019 dash one, for the board to approve the release agreement.
And move to approve the release agreement.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, I believe.
We're competing for real.
Oh, meeting adjourned.